Okay, back over here to Lisa. So what do you think our city's greatest accomplishment has been within the last 10 years?
Because I've lived here for 10 years, but what I've observed from prior to looking at different things like the Main Street program really taking off, brought a lot of focus on to Georgetown as a whole. But you look at the development of the park trails systems, the arts and culture, relationships with nonprofits, I mean, there's a whole lot of things that all add up to the quality of life amenities that Georgetown has brought that is made is super desirable to a lot of people.
Hey Sean, what's the biggest concern you've heard from?
He needs the tennis. Your question.
Same.
Same question for him, I apologize. I know, it's the thrill of getting those jobs, so he still needs the tennis.
Okay, same, same question. What do you think the greatest accomplishment has been in Georgetown in the last 10 years?
I think as Lisa said, you know, there are a number of really good things that are happening in Georgetown, the parks, arts, relationships with nonprofits, but I think the single biggest thing that's happened in the last 10 years, in the last five years, is probably $30 million of revitalization on the square, seeing those architectural assets revitalized and repurposed, re-instituted. And the square today, in my opinion, is more vibrant than it's ever been.
I'll get the first question.
Okay, now we'll shift gears, well, I was gonna ask you just a second here, but you both get to answer the question. So what is your ideal vision for the future of economic development in Georgetown?
Our question, not an easy answer, but I think ideally we would like to look at smart business, developing relationships with smart business, attracting smart business, and simultaneously trying to create attainable housing prices where we can allow people that are going to work for these new prospective companies to be able to live within the Georgetown city limits.
And Lisa, your ideal vision for future economic development in Georgetown?
It's a similar answer. It's going to be attracting large corporations, that's going to be doing a number of different things. One is providing jobs here in town that are higher paid, people don't have to travel as much, coming back to that traffic issue, that's a desirable fact, and looking at affordable housing, which is going to be built into a number of different barriers that are taken to that, but also looking at the balance of that, that we bring back in reinvestment to take care of our existing residents and commercial entities that we already have. So that's going to be a couple of different things for the economic development.
Okay, so the city of Georgetown is currently looking at a mobility bond. Based on current information available, would you support a call for a bond vote?
Yes, short answer is yes. Comes back to the traffic management, moving people around town, in and out of town, but also looking at which district two has become more challenged in is bike and pedestrian friendly areas. So the mobility bond is also addressing not just the vehicles, but also non-motorized methods of transportation. As traffic volume has picked up, safety has definitely become more of a concern, and a lot of our businesses are relying on, you know, foot traffic along Williams and Leander, they're relying on those people to be able to get in and out of their businesses. So that mobility bond is definitely a factor in helping improve that, once they figure out how.
Okay Sean, same question. We're looking at the mobility bond. Based on current information, would you support a call for a bond vote?
Yes, I would support a call for a bond vote, and, you know, I believe that we have mobility issues on Williams Drive, 29 Leander Road, so when I talk to citizens in each of those areas, they all indicate that they'd like some road relief, if you will. I do believe that we do need to be pedestrian friendly. I think it does become a little bit problematic to start looking at bicycle lanes on those high volume traffic roads. I know I have a bicycle, I find it easier to get on the bike trail and hit myself downtown instead of getting on 29, but I do think that we need to have a multi-faceted approach to this relief of mobility, but I think it's going to, it's going to be consolidation of segments, it's going to be kind of some of those shortcuts that I talked about specifically on Williams Drive, Sullivan.
Okay, circling back to something that came a little bit earlier, the chamber surveyed our members, and 8% of those surveyed agreed that government should avoid action that unnecessarily raises the cost of housing, so that our housing is as obtainable as possible for the community's workforce. Based on these results, how can local government avoid action that unnecessarily raises the cost of housing?
I think there's a couple of things that we can do. Perhaps we could streamline our process at City Hall, so we could, I'm not saying give the developers and/or builders an easier pass, but an easier path forward. There is a lot of, it's difficult, that's my day job, so it's not, it's not easy to navigate that. Number two, be conscious of the amount of fees that we pile on to new development. For example, we do have, we're in turn our roads, so we do charge new developers for road use, but if we were to spike that, that gets passed on directly to the end user, the consumer, and that's directly in conflict with the goal of the question.
So Lisa, same question. How can local government avoid action that unnecessarily raises the cost of housing or workforce?
The local government obviously is limited in some capacity to what they set for taxes and such, we've got the schools to pay for and everything, but there is a lot that we could do in regards to working with developers to identify the materials that are used in the home costs, construction costs. Land is what it is, but we have some ways of mitigating in working with the areas that have been identified for buffer zones for that particular type of housing, that they can look at construction materials, and also working with identified responsible vendors or developers that are looking at energy efficiency in the homes, that make the home affordable to maintain and to live in once they're in it. So it isn't a stock gap in just the home cost itself, and also once the people are in it, being able to afford it.
All right, our last question, and then we'll have a woman closing remarks. So this is for Lisa. What do you believe is the biggest threat Georgetown faces and how would you address the issue of elected?
Biggest threat, biggest blessing, kind of what makes beg on that, but it's growth. It's rapid, and there's a lot of land here to develop, so doing it respectfully, doing it smart, making sure that infrastructure is supporting what we're developing, you know, bringing in, coming in, and being foresight to that planning. You know, we look at Williams Drive for District Two, you know, it's here's the different building codes and everything, but having some foresight to prevent that is going to be a blessing to figuring out long-term how that growth is managed.
Okay Sean, same question for you. What do you believe is the biggest threat Georgetown faces and how would you address that if elected?
As I said in my opening statement, I think the biggest issue Georgetown faces is unbridled growth. We just, for the last seven years, we've seen a growth increase, and now it's even higher than it was last year. So how do we regulate, how do we manage, how we, how we direct the flow of that growth is going to be vitally important. My goal as a council member is to be on offense, not end up like the city of Austin where you're on defense for 20 something years trying to catch up, so to be on offense and to look at those different regions, cities where we are having growth, that is not just District Two, but it's citywide, and how we can work with the city staff, and with the developers, and with the homeowners to do that smart, viable work.
Okay, now we have one minute for closing remarks, and Sean, you get to go first.
Thank you. I'll tell a very brief story that kind of summarizes why I decided to run. For the last 21 years I've had my practice on the square, 70% of my clients are relocated to Georgetown. That's not recent, that's for the last 21 years. And something uniquely happens with these clients, they'll come to my office, we discuss their plans, I say, let's go out lunch. Over the last 20 years, we've gone numerous places, but what about lunch? And somewhere between lunch, or between lunch and my office, this happens to the client. They stop, they look at the courthouse, they serve in the square and see the people move around the square, and then they look me in the eye and they say, I can't believe I'm going to get to live here. And at that exact moment, I get to see somebody's eyes open for the first time as to how special Georgetown really is. And I've been there for 21 years watching it, and I know it, and I'm afraid sometimes I forget it or take it for granted, but I want it to be this special 20 years from now.
Thank you. And Lisa, one minute for closing remarks.
Similar sentiments, we've got Charming Town, and it's really going to be a first priority to maintain that, not only for the people who are coming, but really a lot of focus on the people and the businesses who are already here, the reinvestments, the continuation of arts and culture, focus on parks and trails, I mean, there's just so much here to enjoy, and that's really going to be the goal, is to focus on maintaining that.
Thank you both for your participation this evening, and communicating with the folks in the audience, and also the folks that are online and Zoom watching this, a lot more of them outside of the room than inside the room, but I appreciate your responses and good luck in the upcoming election.
Thank you.
It took a picture of me. There was me, one second. We got, we made it.
All right, we have Michael Walden here, and our other candidate, Rachel Johnru, can't be here, she sends her regrets, but she will be completing the question that will be provided, and her responses will be posted to the Georgetown Chamber website. In addition to Michael's, we'll just get Michael's live answers here as well. So thank you, thank you for joining us, Michael. We'll start off with the opening remarks, so what would you do for your opening remarks?
Sure. Thank you. My name's Michael Walden, I'm running for the District Six City Council seat. And before I tell my story, I'm just gonna say thank you to the chamber for having this event, and its members for supporting it, and everyone who's here, and all those who are home watching. I think this is a valuable tool for people to help them make their decisions about who they want to vote for, so thanks for having us. So I grew up in Houston, Texas, and was born and raised there, and after I graduated from high school, I sort of ran around the circles for a while, didn't know what I wanted to do or why, so I decided to go on a little adventure and I moved to Florida. Left my family, my friends, everything, and moved to Florida on my own, tried to find myself and what I wanted to do. And one of the very first things I learned is I needed to go to school. So I had an opportunity to go to Tallahassee a few times, and I really liked town, and it just so happens that Florida State is there, so I went to school at Florida State. And I graduated with an undergraduate degree in the management of information systems. And immediately thereafter, I moved to Atlanta, where I started my 21-year career with IBM. As an IBMer, I've done a variety of different roles, ranging from pure technical all the way to management, worked on projects around the world and all over the United States with a variety of people with different backgrounds. In 2001, I realized that I am a Texan and I need to go back home, so I moved back here, and, but as soon as I went to Houston, I went to Austin. And in Austin, I met my future wife, Samantha. We got married in 2005, and in 2013, we moved to Georgetown. And moving to Georgetown was a significant change for us. She got a job as a teacher with G.I.S.D., which she's still doing today, and I became more involved in the community, and I've grown to love Georgetown as a result of all of that, and which was of major influences of why I chose to move. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Michael. Now, of all those points, what was the most important factor that influenced your decision to run for City Council?
It's a flimsy ball. So there was a lot of factors, you know, I just mentioned, just I love Georgetown, and I love my neighbors, and I love the community, and I love District Six, but I think the biggest influencer was the high sensing of growing division within District Six. And what I mean by that is, when I go to council meetings or go to art meetings, there are several people there that are very angry, very upset, and that bothers me. I think many people feel that they are not represented, and I think others, I believe that others are not well represented, and I think that needs to change. We often hear that what's very important about Georgetown is the small-town community personality that we have, and I feel like in order to have that, then we need to be neighbors, we need to listen to each other, and we need to collaborate and communicate to get things done together. So I would say that was my top reason.
Thinking about your ideal vision of Georgetown and economic development, how would you describe that?
Yeah, so something I've heard a lot, and you hear it at council meetings, Sean mentioned it all over, I think one of the things that I've seen living in Georgetown in the last seven years is the majority of the growth has been happening to the west and north. And we're hearing from our city manager and other folks that there's a lot of housing that's coming to the east or southeast. What we don't see in the east or southeast are what are sometimes referred to as amenities, so shopping, access to medical services, gas stations, car, you know, all the things that residents need on a daily basis. I live in the eastern part of Old Town, and every time I want to go shopping, I have to go west. Of course, I go to the square, but if I need to go to Target or go to ECD or, you know, a bigger store, I have to go west, and that increases traffic. So one of our big problems that we're all familiar with is the traffic on 29 and Williams. So to answer your question, our vision of economic development is that we spread it out a bit more, and we provide amenities to those areas that traffic don't have.
Okay, the city's currently looking at a mobility bond. Based on the current information available, would you support a call for a bond vote?
Yes, I would, but I think the key part of your question is based on the current information available. So they're just getting started. I think it will ultimately depend on what's in the package, how big is it, what does it include, and therefore decide. I have faith in the committee that has been appointed to work through it and get the input and put it together, and certainly we need it. Going back to your previous question, another part of economic development, we need to be more proactive about development, and particularly with infrastructure. So having a mobility bond now, and to have projects that prepare for the future growth, I think is absolutely a good idea.
Now, speaking with the theme here, we have transportation there, but, you know, looking at infrastructure in Georgetown in general, and District Six particularly, what do you see is the biggest gap or biggest gaps in your district?
Sure, so the obvious one, I think most all of us are aware of, especially if you came here tonight, is the intersection of Williams and Austin, right? It's always jammed, there's always angry people honking their horns and cutting lanes and whatever, right? So we know that that's there, and we also know there's a project in the pipeline. But in District Six, there's a couple of other things that I think that we need to look at, and one of our sidewalks. Yes, there have been recent sidewalk improvements in District Six, and that's great, but there's a huge part of it that has no sidewalks. Or if they're there, they're not long enough, or they don't connect to other sidewalks. That's a safety issue that we need to address. There are also some drainage issues on University and Austin Avenue, where we have major rains, there's standing water, again, it's a safety issue. And lastly is, sorry, I'm gonna go get my notes here, the traffic flow and speeding, sorry, gotta finish that.
Maybe you couldn't comment.
Yeah, so we'll give you a real softball in here. So in January, the Chamber sent a letter to the City Council in support of the council adding downtown parking. The Chamber's board was a different location, and encouraged the council to move forward with the addition of parking. What is your solution for parking in downtown Georgetown?
All right, so I was the chair of the council-appointed citizen committee for the design of the downtown parking garage, that's an op for. And we spent nine months working together, gathering lots of input from a variety of different sources on this very thing. And of course, the overwhelming response we got, both from downtown business owners as well as citizens, is there's a parking problem downtown. So when it comes to the design, the output of our committee, I'm absolutely not in favor of it. I wouldn't stand behind something that we presented to council, or wouldn't not stand behind something we presented to council. As far as the location is concerned, based on what I know now, what I've heard, I would vote in favor of it. However, I feel like that is an area where there was a failure. The parking topic started in 2015, not when the committee got together, and then there's been a lot of opportunities to assess particular locations, and I'm not sure that that was adequately done.
Okay, thanks. So, again, another chamber survey, 8% of our members agreed or strongly agree that government should avoid action that unnecessarily raises the cost of housing, so that housing is obtainable as possible for our community's workforce. Based on those results, how can local government avoid action that unnecessarily raises the cost of housing?
Yeah, so when I read that question, I was a little amused, because I would have expected that 100% of people would not be in favor of unnecessarily, you know, raising costs unnecessarily. To me, the way to avoid it is to analyze what's being proposed, so, and not necessarily the how, but the what, or the why. So why is it that you're saying we need to do this? Okay, now what are our options to do whatever it is that needs to be done, versus taking whatever is proposed that may unnecessarily raise the cost? And that really goes for everything, not just housing.
Okay, so thinking back over the last 10 years, what would you say is Georgetown's greatest accomplishment as a city?
Yeah, so I moved, my wife and I moved here almost eight years ago, and what we did, the square, of course, was functional, and we would go there, you know, to have a meal or just walk around and enjoy the scenery, but it was, you know, it would shut down basically 6:00 PM, and maybe on Sundays, there wasn't even, nothing was open. So in the last seven years, that has changed dramatically. It's a thriving center, heart of our city. Anytime you read any sort of materials, marketing or travel, you know, all they talk about is our square, come to Georgetown, Charming Square, the huge shops, the nice restaurants you saw. I think the credit for that goes to a variety of individuals and groups, including the Main Street Board, our economic development team, on-site staff, as well as the business owners and the property owners, and then of course, all of us who go there and spend the money. So to me, it's a great place, and it's only going to get better.
So in the coming years, TechStop has a plan for major reconfiguration of Williams Drive and the I-35 interchange, you mentioned this a few minutes ago, so this project's going to have a big impact on businesses in the corridor in your district. How do you plan to work with TechStop, the city staff, to ensure the businesses do not have another unnecessary burden?
I think the most important thing is proactive and continual communication, both ways. So what's going to happen, why is it happening, when is it happening, and how long is it going to take before it's finished? We get that input, and then the business owners and citizens should be able to comment and say, hey, instead of putting that temporary entrance here, maybe if we move it over here, it'll help with the traffic flow in and out of this parking lot, you know, something to that effect. Mainly, it's all about communication and making sure that everybody knows what's happening, why, and how long it's going to take.
So Michael, in your opinion, what do you believe are the biggest threats facing Georgetown, and if elected, how would you address those threats?
Yeah, so you've heard this already tonight, I think the biggest threat, and irony, I choose to use the word challenge, the growth challenge, is managing the growth, and that's the city as a whole, right? And I use the word proactive before, I'll say it again, we need to be proactive, anticipate, understand the trends, what's coming, listen to the people, and, you know, take steps that address issues or that address topics before they come to issues. Specifically in District Six, I think the ongoing and long-term vibrancy and success of downtown is critical. We're having all this growth, we have new retail, new shopping areas and all that, We're having all this growth. We have new retail, new shopping areas and all that, and those are ultimately all competitors to our downtown local businesses. So, you know, while they're great, I use them, they're convenient. We still, you know, the other stores, we still need to do everything we can to support our downtown local businesses. If we don't do that, then we're going to put the square at risk.
Our last question, and I'll have one minute for closing comments. The biggest concern that you've heard from businesses, if there is one, and how would you plan to address that concern or those concerns that you've heard?
Sure, so there are three. One we already talked about, which is parking, so let's get down. Another is what I would call confusing requirements and extended process and procedures. So if something is required of a business owner in order to open the business, or required of a building owner in order to make a change to the building, that's fine, and I support those requirements. But they need to be consistent and universally and fairly applied. So if a business owner has told one thing on day one, and they told something different on day 10 or 20, that's a problem. As far as process goes, we need to find efficiencies. The longer it takes to get a permit or to come to council to get something approved, that's costing money to the business owner. So I'm in favor of the policies, I'm in favor of the procedures. We just need to make them clear, consistent, and more efficient.
Okay, thanks for that. You have one minute for closing comment?
Sure, one minute. The last thing on the infrastructure problem, I really want to mention it because it's a big one in District Six, is traffic flow and speeding. And I know this is a problem across Georgetown, but a lot of people had to cut through neighborhood streets to avoid intersections or avoid traffic. We need to do something about that, and particularly about the speeding. And in District Six, there are, I have heard many, many times, and I've witnessed it myself, Fiddle Road, 15th Street, and Second Street are big problems. So I don't know what the answers are, but we need to do something about it. As far as a general closing statement, thank you again for having this. I'm proud to be a Georgetown resident. I really have enjoyed being involved with the community and active with our council and our various boards. I was the president of Preservation Georgetown for two years. I was on the board for five. And that exposed me to a lot of things and opened my eyes, and I really appreciate the opportunity to represent District Six. And I ask to all those that are listening, I appreciate your vote.
All right, thank you very much, Michael.
Again, please be with us for one moment while we transition to Georgetown ISD Board of Trustees. Bear with us for one moment while we transition to Georgetown ISD Board of Trustees.
Okay, welcome to our candidate form for place four. I have to write one for Georgetown Municipal District trustee election. We have three candidates, although we had two with us here tonight. Stephanie Blank, David Phillips, and Francis Jackson. Was not able to attend, but will complete the questionnaire, and you'll be able to find out on the chamber website, as you'll also find the other responses on the chamber website as well. So we'll get started with Stephanie for an opening remark, and then we'll go to David for the same, and then David will get the first question. So Stephanie, take it away.
Do you want me to stand? Yes, no?
No, I'd say no.
Okay, so the camera can see. Hi, I'm Stephanie Blank, and I am running for school board trustee number four. And thank you, Chamber, for doing this this evening and inviting us to be here. I came to Georgetown in 1980. My daughter was a month old. I was a school psychologist up in Bell County. I started working in the Georgetown schools in 1986 as a licensed specialist in school psychology, and eventually became a school administrator and was the assistant principal at Amy Pearl with 900 little kiddos under the age of seven. Eventually became the special education director and did that for 15 years. During that time, I raised two incredible children, Devon, who is now Devon Boss, class of 1998, and my son Keegan, class of 2004. My current Y are three adorable grandsons, Preston, Owen, and Brayden, who is up at the high school right now, marching away, and I should be there. There's no need cheering him on. They are my Y, but I am running because when I retired, the Georgetown schools were absolutely incredible, and I have been asked to run by a variety of different people throughout the community. And I have continued to mentor children since I retired and mentor parents, very involved with anything that has to do with children, the community, help, whatever you name it, I'll do it. And I'm sure I'm almost over, so no, I'm not, but I hope you don't want to say. Thank you.
Very good, Stephanie. David, your opening remarks.
Well, I would also like to thank you all for hosting this. It's a great opportunity for folks to hear us very directly respond to questions. Thank you for all that you meant. I'm real glad you all did this. I've lived here in Georgetown for 16 years now. I have two kids, both in one through the GIST system. One of them is still there. She's in eighth grade playing volleyball right now. And like Stephanie, that's probably where I should be. So I started my career as a firefighter, paramedic, did that for about 20-some years, and became a chief officer for a few communities and cities and organizations, and later became a healthcare entrepreneur. So I founded and led as CEO a handful of companies. I still serve as a CEO for physician practice and also as a managing partner for another healthcare entity. And I also have been volunteering in GIST for the past eight years pretty extensively. I was Bobby the Bobcat at McCoy Elementary for seven years, I guess six years. And then I've been spending a day a week in a school using elementary for that entire time as well. So I've amassed quite a bit of experience in the buildings. I have a degree in education and been teaching and learning, I hope, my whole life as well. Taught extensively at multiple levels. I've had this job now for three years. This is my first term, and I'd love the opportunity to continue to serve. I believe that this job fundamentally is leading a very, very large corporation with complex legal and HR and strategic issues that are very, very challenging, and I think the right folks to lead an organization like that are those that have experience with matters at that level and of those types.
Okay, David, the first question. What could Georgetown Municipal District do to be the first choice of education for Georgetown residents?
I think a handful of things. One is we certainly want to improve our performance on the state supports and state tests. That isn't a simple measurement that can be seen very readily. Not a simple fix, but it can be seen easily. So I think that's a priority for us, and we attacked that this last year pretty aggressively, I felt like, and made some changes that are going to produce a good outcome on that measurement. The second thing is CC Mar, CTEs. Those are college career, military readiness, and college, or career technical education. So those are pathways where kids can learn stuff that really gives them a job right away. And I think those are very, very intense, and that's rocketry and cooking and lots of cool stuff. So I think that's really critical to us being a little more fair ourselves.
Thanks, David. Stephanie, the same question. What could Georgetown Municipal District do to be the first choice of education for Georgetown residents?
Okay, thank you. Until our scores are better and we demonstrate on paper that we offer a quality education, families may be moving here, but they may not be enrolling the children in our schools, and we need them to enroll. Right now, whether you check the TBA website, Children at Risk, or GoodSchools.org, which is with Realtors, the results are not very favorable to GIST. So we need to improve the educational experience for all kids, and we must demonstrate that all children will get the same quality educational experience, regardless of what program or special program that they're in. Goals must come from the top, and the core is set for each campus as a collaborative. Campuses can have their own culture and climate, but we all need to be steering in the same direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. We'll kind of go further down the path, I think, a little bit. So college career, military readiness, that's kind of an initiative that the district has put into place. How would you define the college career, military readiness at each level and as a final product?
I think David hit the nail on the head. We have incredible programs at our secondary level. In 1998, when my daughter Devon graduated, she was a CNA and just one test short of being an EMT. And my son, in '04, was a pilot. So we have absolutely incredible high school programs, but it's imperative that all the students have the skills that they need in order to get into those programs. So it's a lot of basic requirements, and I would love to see us expand into the middle school level and even elementary. I had a junior leadership kiddo just last year tell me after Government Day that he did not realize that he could get a job in government and not be voted in. So I, yeah, so this is a very high achieving student. So we are doing great things. I would love us to expand. Thank you.
All right, David, the same question, that college career and military readiness. How would you define that, and what would that look like for you at Georgetown?
So that's one of those rare monikers that it actually means exactly what it says. Right, it says, when the cake gets done, is he ready for college or work or the military? And so there's very, very clear outcome measurements for that, very clear pathways for that. Our job is to expand that as much as possible. And we have done so tremendously since, since I've been on board as well. I'm super proud of that. We've done a great job of deepening and broadening that program, making it effective. We have one of the highest CC Mar scores in the state. Our CTE scores are very, very, very good in state, so we've done a great job with that. I think Stephanie is exactly right. It would be a boon to be able to push that down further and further and further. And we are ready to do that. And just this last meeting, in fact, we committed to moving forward with a whole new facility so that we can deepen and broaden that program.
I want to jump to kind of what's probably the elephant for everybody that has kids that are in school or brain kids that are in school, COVID. It's had an extraordinary impact on the schools and community. For example, it seems like 5,000 Chromebooks were delivered in the past couple of weeks, and so kind of understanding the resources that are required. What specific skills and experience would you bring as a trustee to support the district in this unique time and process to make sure that virtual hybrid and all those learning that you're going on?
So that's, you're right, that's been a tremendous hurdle and challenge, but also an opportunity. COVID has and will change education forever. It's changed how we do it. And we have, I think, responded to that, and certainly myself. I've said that over and over and over to my colleagues as well. So we've got to embrace this. We've got to do something really profound. This is our time, this is our moment. My career is in healthcare, so I have, I understand that stuff, and I have a tremendous amount of access to information regarding that. I still run a physician practice, my day job. So we get a tremendous amount of real-time data about what we know about COVID, and I bring that back to the board and to staff regularly, and have really tried to be a strong voice for good choices on that issue.
Same question. The impact of COVID in our schools and what the skills and experience do you bring to the problem of solving the resource issues on virtual work?
Yeah, good or bad, school boards have a tendency to get blamed for things that go well or not well. And I heard tonight on the news, actually, that there's $6 million or $8 million out there that the state has not utilized yet. And I think the school districts need to start banging on those doors to get the money to offset what we've spent on Chromebooks. But as a community, being a board member, I think we need to really focus on transparent communication to our community, and we need to start really looking at the worst-case scenario for this spring because we don't know where COVID is going. We don't know. My daughter told me today that a lot of the elementary kids are coming back in, but a lot of the high school kids are going back to virtual. So there's so many moving parts that we need to plan for the worst, and hopefully it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Okay, so as Georgetown ISD continues to grow, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the school district?
Okay, in the last 10 years, Georgetown ISD has only grown by 1,600 students in 10 years. So whereas the community is growing, the children are not coming into the schools. We have some districts in the area that are growing by that number every year. So we need to do a better job of attracting the parents who move here to actually enroll their children into school. And then once they do, because you know, day one, we have demographers moving our kids around and saying, you're going to have X number day one, and they don't. They either have more, or they have far less, and then we move teachers. So because of all these moving parts, to me, those are the biggest struggles, is to get it right, which is totally impossible. But we need to really attract the parents to please enroll their kids.
All right, David, the same question. The biggest challenge facing the district as the community grows and the district grows?
So the growth is very significant and very challenging. So to me, what I've kind of committed to is no kids and portable walls and no empty buildings. We got to find a middle spot. So that means we are building a new school just in time, whenever we can, which is really hard because it's a five-year run-up to build a school. So so far, we've been able to do that, certainly since I've been here. We have succeeded in that. And I think we are very, very thoughtful about that, and that's basically what I tell myself and my colleagues over and over and over, is no kids and portable walls and no empty buildings. So every, every meeting, we think hard, and then we talk and plan for where the next building needs to go exactly when. And we've been pretty good at it so far. It's not perfect, but it requires an enormous amount of thought and an enormous amount of strategic experience as well.
All right, David, sticking with you. So the elected trustees are called, what's also known as a team of eight, which refers to the trustees working with the superintendent to implement policy. What makes you uniquely qualified to help the trustees achieve the direction from a team perspective?
So the need for that team outlook and the ability to build coalitions with each other is critical in school board. If you don't have that skill, you really won't get anything done. It's, it requires more cohesiveness related in the department body. And that was by design. It wasn't intentional. So without that ability, you, any potential trustee would struggle terribly. And so that has something I personally taken very, very serious most of my life, and it is a skill I believe I have and have been successful in building connections, not just with the other trustees and getting them to with me when I felt strongly about something, but also with the senior administrators and the administrative leadership to give them the support otherwise you're going to be calling for a mandate that no one wants to implement, and that fails as well.
Thanks, David. Stephanie, the same question with a team of eight. What makes you uniquely qualified to help the trustees achieve the district's direction from a team perspective?
If I didn't have the ability to work collaboratively with diverse people and diverse opinions, I would not have been successful at my job. Special education is all about that. all about that, negotiating and listening and collaborating. I feel like I would be an independent voice on the school board, but I know what information is important for the school board to be looking at. I know where to find the data. I know where all the moving parts are, and I know what questions to ask so that decisions can be made. I am much more of a uniter than a divider, but I am a very collaborative person and really appreciate open dialogue in a respectful way, and I will bring that to the table.
All right, last question. Then we'll have one minute for closing remarks. Stephanie, I'll go to you first. What is the role of bonds in relation to funding for school districts?
I kept looking at that question, wondering what the trick was to this, because a school bond is just that. The money goes to building a building. You determine whether your community agrees with you. You put it on as a referendum, and if they pass it, you built what they say you would build. That's all I can say about school bonds. I'm sure I've passed a lot, and I have bought bonds.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. David, same question for you. What's the role of bonds in relation to funding for school districts?
So there's a critical distinction. There is maintenance operations, and there's capital or sinking finances in school, and that's a very important understanding. So, for example, bond funds can't be used to pay daily bills. They can't be used to pay staff. They can't be used to run operations. And that is confusing to the public. They say, let's raise money for a bond, and then wonder why we can't use that for teacher raises. That's a great example. And the fact is, the money is completely different by law, and you have to know that and have an understanding. And having said that, bonds are extraordinarily fiscally responsible and conservative way to raise them. We manage them extremely well, very conservatively. We continue to support it, and we've been able to find innovative ways to buy things like buses and even laptops, things that don't look like a building with bond money, and save our tax money, our M&amp;L money for things like raises. So one must deeply understand and be able to manage that rather complex fiscal thing. And we've got a great team that helps us do that.
All right, so we have one more question, and then our closing. So there we go. What's the role of Georgetown Independent School District in closing the skills gap and utilizing community resources?
Critical. So that's for our CCMAR and our CTE programs that we're deeply invested in and have strong support are just so valuable, especially if people that participate in the Chamber of Commerce, is we can directly connect employers and businesses here. It becomes a powerful, powerful training program and employment opportunity for our kids, real work that connects them directly to the community. And certainly, part of that vision is you're picturing a kid going through our CTE program and walking straight out the door and going to work here, you know, or opening his own business here. That's literally what we envision in. And so that's the connection we must have with the folks from the chamber, with local community businesses, in that that is a relationship that we have the responsibility as the board to foster and grow.
Thanks, Stephanie. Same question. What's the role of Georgetown Independent School District in closing the skills gap and utilizing community resources?
We have an incredible community. Obviously, with Sun City, we have a whole lot of retired professionals who are willing to come in and help us. We need to communicate proactively with our community, and we need to find ways to get to them in order to get the buy-in from everybody, not just the business leaders, but the parents and the communities. And sometimes that may mean that we need to go to them, they not come to us. The state and the district is incredible, and I wish we could get more people in to see all the wonderful things that is happening. But I want us to listen to the community and respond to its feedback, not the meetings where we already know where we want to go. I want meetings where we are just listening and trying to find the things that we can make some changes and get the engagement even better. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Now you have one minute for a closing remark.
Okay. Again, my name is Stephanie Blank, and I'm running for trustee number four, and I would appreciate your support. I have dedicated my whole life to education and to children, and I have dedicated so many years to Georgetown, and I love this community. I want us to start really showing the children that we have a safe, respectful, and wonderful education for them. And I want the community, I want the parents to re-enroll their kids back into Georgetown ISD. So Stephanie Blank, place four. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Stephanie. And David, one minute for closing remarks.
David Phillips also plays for Georgetown ISD. I appreciate your vote and your support. Again, I believe that the role of the board is to help run a very large $150 million, 2,000 employee company. And I think the folks who can lead that very large organization successfully into the future are folks who have experience doing that and also have the skill set to face those kinds of challenges. Having said that, my heart is about kids. I spend thousands of hours working with kids. I volunteer all over this community, in the schools especially. And I have very specifically taken on the concern about behavioral, social, and emotional learning, and have fought a good fight for that, I believe. And I'd like the opportunity to continue to do so. Thank you.
I want to thank you both very much for your presentation tonight. Thank you, everybody. We'll have a brief pause as we get ready for our last part of our candidate forum, Georgetown Independent Board of Trustees, place five. Bear with us as we transition. Welcome, y'all, to the place five of the candidate forum. Melanie Dunham and Eric Robinson here tonight. And we've got it figured out that Melanie will be going first with an opening remark, and then Eric. And Eric, your first question, and then we'll roll from there. So Melanie?
Okay. I'm Melanie Dunham. I'm running for place five for the Georgetown ISD Board of Trustees. I was first elected to this position in 2014, but my legacy of service began long before that. We moved to Georgetown in 2004. I had two little girls, and my oldest started in the garden in April. At that time, I was on the April PTA. I've served every position that you can think of in April PTA. I served on the Preservation Georgetown, which was a historical society at that time. I have sold ice cream, stuffed folders, handed out oranges and water at Field Day, everything that you can imagine that a parent would have to do. I also served on the Boys and Girls Club, GIST Education Foundation, Arts and Culture Board, and professionally, I work for nonprofits. I'm a writer. So my life has been dedicated to service. I currently have three kiddos in GIST schools. And my oldest graduated from Eastview last year, and she is coming at Texas A&amp;M. I'm in schools all the time. I have been a part of the landscape of Old Town and GIST schools for a long time, and that's my passion. That's where I'm serving. So I think that I'm excited about continuing that legacy of service. I've taught that to my kiddos. It's something that we have as a family value, giving back to our community, being present all the time, and really being a part of the landscape that is Georgetown. We love this area so much, and it's really where our home's in, even though we've only been here for a very short, you know, 15, 20. Thanks.
Melanie, and Eric?
Sure, thank you. The mic's just on. All right, thank you very much.
This is, there it is.
There we go. Yeah, I haven't started. You're good to go.
All right. Thank you so much. Again, I'm Eric Robinson, and thank you so much for the change of our hostess in this. About me, first, I'm proud to have two wonderful sweet daughters and an amazing wife, Suzanne. I grew up in the Carolinas, got my bachelor's degree at School Psychology University, South Carolina, where I worked as a school psychologist in the public schools in Columbia for several years, working with regular education students, special education students, and actually with the gifted and talented program with the University of Kansas, doing my PhD in School Psychology. While in Kansas, I worked in the public schools in Pika, Kansas, as a classroom management consultant, two days a week, at two other schools for a school year. I also worked at the University of Kansas Medical Center for 18 months, building an autism assessment team. Did a pre-doctoral internship in Boystown in Oha, Nebraska, which is a professional program for juvenile liquid boys and girls. It's a residential treatment facility. In 1997, I moved to Texas and started teaching at Baylor University, where I direct our school psychology graduate programs, teach a lot of undergraduate teachers, special ed teachers, regular teachers, done numerous workshops in Waco ISD, Midland, McWay ISD, La Vega, Walter, Waco Area, and also actually in Georgetown ISD. Presented educational products and presentations at Region 12 and Region 13 Educational Service Centers. A lot of experience. I've directed our Alzheim Resource Clinic. And for a specific role of a leadership, I have finished my sixth and final year as a board trustee at Iowa College, University of New Rochelle, New York, where I've been Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, and have served on this board for six years. I have good understanding of how boards function at an educational level. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Eric, you get the first question. What can Georgetown ISD do to be the first choice of education for Georgetown residents, and specifically two or three areas of improvement that you see that can be done in the next couple of years?
Sure. I think for us to be a first choice, we have to get our academic standing in a much better place. I mean, the start process has been a double-edged sword, and it's definitely done a perfect test, but it's a test that people pay attention to, and the scores, and our scores have been dropping the last five years. We didn't get a metric in 2020, but there was really no offense. We weren't going to do any better at that point. So if people pay attention to this, they notice when their scores are doing well academically, and students don't come to this district. Since 2015, we've lost 1,300 students. I transferred out of our 900 of those students have gone to charter schools. We have to do something academically to get our kids to come back to this district and make this district as powerful as it has been in the past.
All right, Melanie, the same question. What can Georgetown ISD do to be the first choice of education for Georgetown residents in two or three areas of improvement over the next couple of years?
Parents really appreciate having choice for their kiddos, and having opportunities for them at every level in so many different ways is really important. So if you have particular courses that are really rigorous for academics, AP, dual language, dual credit, a lot of academic offerings, and choice is really important. Having CTE options for kids, really incredible career and technical programs, being able to graduate with a certification, being able to graduate with an associate's degree. These are things that parents really appreciate their kids having opportunities for. Having really robust programs is great. Having wonderful teachers, really accomplished staff with high levels of degrees, having a really exceptional social-emotional learning program, knowing that your kids are going to be supportive with their behavioral and mental health and performance.
Thanks, Melanie. And so college career and military readiness, how do you define that, and what does that mean from your perspective?
There are obvious definitions for that. To be college-ready kiddo would need to take some AP courses or accomplish certain high-level courses. They would need to sit for advanced placement exams or different tests. It is pretty by the book. Essentially, what we want kiddos to do is to graduate our programs ready for the world, ready to go to a college of their choice, ready to start a job or career, ready to join the military. It's pretty simple, but essentially, prepare kids for their future success, and whatever that may be. It may not be going into the workforce. It may be being in our Bridges program for our special needs, you know, kiddos to graduate into adulthood. But we want to do that so that those kids are successful. So every kid is successful in the path that they choose. And that's our goal. We want every kiddo to have a successful future.
Okay, well, we'll hit the COVID question. Oh, wait a minute. I'm right up here. So, yes, college career military readiness, Eric?
Sure, thank you very much. Yes, I believe this is clear as Ms. Dunham has stated, Jim, but this is something I think that Georgetown ISD does really well. I think we score well in this area. I'm a data-driven person, so I'm also looking for numbers. And our students form well in areas of this. I think it's important for us to prepare all our students for the different options that are out there. The college is wonderful, but it's not for everybody, and it doesn't need to be. The military is a great option for individuals. And just having them prepare to get a job and pursue what they've been wanting, and that's for all of our students, our special needs students, our most gifted students. And I think Georgetown does a nice job with that. I think we need to push some of these programs down into the middle school more than we are doing, but I think that's a robust program right now.
So you get to leave with the COVID question, Eric. Obviously, the short-term impact on our schools and the community. What specific skills and experience would you bring as a trustee to support the district in this unique time? And what is your understanding of kind of the resource requirements in districts, like the 5,000 Chromebooks or the access that we have across our district for virtualizing?
Sure. I mean, I think I've raised an experience as a professor at Baylor University. We've struggled with the same thing, the same amount of time, as I mentioned, I'm on a board at a college in New York, which was actually the very first top spot in the country, which is New Rochelle, which was to cover part of the campus of Iowa College. So then deeply engaged as a trustee there to kind of navigate the system. It's an education system, much like the schools, but I think in A-12 is a challenging situation. I think it's really hard to do. That being said, I think that our district, I think we could be a little more proactive in what we do. I think we're a little behind in ordering Chromebooks. I think they're here now, but other districts had these much earlier. I think we could do it a little more with some of the PPE things we have. We need to plan for the future. We don't know what the spring's going to hold. I think we need to be real planned for the paths of contingency options that I've not seen us do yet as we continue to work.
Hey, Melanie, the COVID and the impact, what skills as a trustee would you raise to support the district?
So our board right now is comprised of people from all different kinds of professions, and that's one of the qualities that really makes us work well together. My role is as the one who is most likely to represent and know and understand and feel our vulnerable families. So if I'm the one in a meeting who is asking about, are we thinking about our low socio-eco families? Are we thinking about our special needs families? Have we talked to the teachers to see how they feel about this? Have we talked to the parents to see, are we thinking about childcare for teachers? It is my role typically to represent empathy and families and parenting. We've done a great job in thinking about those things. We've done a great job in preparing. We ordered those Chromebooks in June or July. There was a demand shortage. Everybody experienced it. We're all human. It's been a rough ride, but I know that our people are doing great things.
So think about growth in the community and the school district. And Melanie, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing our district? And Melanie, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing our district?
So growth is something that's happening a lot with our economic development, a little bit less with our students, but we are still growing a lot. And because we want to provide the best education that we can for every student, and that number keeps growing, it's really hard to provide exceptional, varied opportunities at every single level. So we want to make sure that all of our kiddos have the very best opportunities that they can have, from our very highest achievers, who are building rockets and airplanes and graduating with bachelor's degrees essentially almost, to our special needs kiddos who are moving into the Bridges program, and we're going to support them until they're 21 years old. We have to be able to maintain a high-quality level of education for kids at all levels, and that is difficult to do more and more and more and more. So maintaining that quality education for more and more kids is really hard. That's what we're working on.
Thanks, Melanie. Eric, the same question. Is Georgetown District contingency great? What do you think is the biggest challenge facing the district?
I would echo what Ms. Dunham said. I think our community is going larger faster than our schools are, and I think that's because parents are paying attention to our schools. And in general, they're unhappy with the direction we're going as a group. As a whole, I should say, I think our academics again are problematic. We also have a pretty high office referral and discipline referral issue in the district that we have to address. So I think those are some of the concerns that we have, where we have to clearly communicate to the district that we're going in the direction that's going to improve the academics and improve the behavioral barrier. And also that we need to educate all our students, from our most talented to our least talented, and we're doing producing evidence-based and research-based practices to do that. And we can be strategic when we do that. There's a lot of strategies on how we can work with different sets of students in different ways to improve academically and behaviorally.
All right. I think we go a little bit deeper into that subject here. So what do you see as the role of the district in closing the skills gaps? And how do you define a quality public education outcomes?
How do I define a quality public education outcome? Sure. I think there's a variety of ways to determine whether we have a quality public education. First and foremost, are we teaching our kids to do academics, kind of basically writing math, teaching them how to think, how to be scientists, how to learn our history, you know, our government, how that works? So I think that's the main focus of all schools. Like, that's kind of the moral imperative parents have when they send kids to school, is that schools are going to do the best, and use the best resources they know to teach all kids the best way they can. So I think, I don't think we're doing it as well as we can right now. We have to have expertise to bring some of the skills and the knowledge and the evidence to do that, to close the skills gap. So quality education, I think, needs that overall. That we have students that are learning and graduating with skills across the board academically.
Melanie, same question. The role of the district in closing skills gaps and finding quality public education outcomes?
So our job is to make sure that every student, every kiddo, no matter where they're growing up, what their family situation is like, the road that they've traveled so far, when we get them inside of our buildings, we need to bring them up to the level that they need to be to be successful. And so it's not just about academics. It's about social-emotional health. It's about embracing our community and the resources that they can provide. It's about taking on these kiddos when they're at home and making sure that they're fed and making sure that they have healthcare that they may not be getting. We provide academics in the classroom. We also provide the soft skills that kids need to be successful. And that's our job. That's how we do that kind of thing. In order for us to do that, we do have to rely on the community to offer up the services that they have, if it's tutoring, if it's, you know, social-emotional help. They have, we can work together to make sure that kids are prepared for their future.
So, yeah, back to Melanie. So think about the role of bonds and funding education. How do you see utilizing bonds and funding education in the state?
So we use bonds to pay for things that would normally fit in our budget. We use them for capital improvements, technology advances, you know, facilities. But the great thing that I think about bonds is it brings our community together. We start with a committee of citizens who, you know, they receive data. They take a look at the district. They assess what we need. And it's comprised of business owners, citizens, our general community. It's a way for everybody to be engaged. And after they determine what we need to have on a bond, then they take that to the community as well, the larger community, so that, you know, we can all be on the same page. It's a great tool for both advancing our district and getting our community involved in what's going on in our schools.
Eric, you reveal the role of bonds and funding education.
You know, I see bonds, again, is an opportunity for the community to pitch trust in the district. I mean, it's really what we're asking. We're going to a community, and we're saying, give us some more of your tax dollars. And we're taxed pretty high in a variety of ways anyway. So I think that's what bonds do. And typically, as was mentioned before, it's an opportunity to build things typically. We can buy other things. We can buy buses. We can buy a variety of things. People used to say it wasn't really a bond referendum, but we have to be clear with community in what we're buying and what we say we're going to purchase in a bond referendum. That's what we purchase. I think that's where communities get upset the most, is if you say you're going to do, buy, build something, and you don't build it. I don't think that happens in Georgetown. I think we're great at bonds. I think we do well with that. I think we just have to continue to trust and ask for trust in the community. And also, I think we have to kind of be careful in managing why we're building in closing some of our schools, and could we not maybe do some different things with some of our current or existing schools instead of building some of our, because I think we have a lot of capacity right now to build a lot of schools.
Team of eight. So the elected trustees have this team available, which is the concept of trustees working with superintendent unit policy. What makes you uniquely qualified to help trustees achieve that from a team perspective?
Sure. I think I'm highly qualified to work with groups of people. I mean, from working as a school psychologist, you work on these multidisciplinary teams where you work with parents and teachers and administrators, often on different page on what to do with the kid. If they have some special education needs, worked on interdisciplinary teams in the medical setting. I was a setup supervisor over at Iona for six years. I was the chair of the back of the Senate at Baylor, which was the challenge to try to learn and collaborate. So I think I'm very good at collaborating and working with people. That being said, I'm also a independent thinker. And I think I should, people can easily know what I believe in board meetings. I might tell them my thoughts on how issues should be addressed. And when it comes time to decide to work together, I think I have that skill set. And also, I'm very much of a data-driven person, so I want to make sure that we all look at the same data and interpret it the same way. So I think I have very good skills to the board.
Thanks, Eric. Melanie, same question. With the team of eight, how do you see yourself uniquely qualified to help the trustees achieve the district's direction from a team perspective?
So having done this job for six years now, I understand the workings of this board. I understand the personalities. I understand how we are, how we relate to staff and administration, and what our role really is. You know, we're a governance board. We are not tasked with directing teachers and staff. We are not tasked with day-to-day operations. We do not manage all levels of our organization. We provide guidance and vision and ask questions, get feedback, you know, really determine the course of the ship that we're on. We operate with respect. We have really cultivated a culture of respect and understanding and collaboration. We don't always agree, but we know how to treat each other, talk to each other, bring our own ideas to the board to accomplish the same goal. We have the same goal of educating kiddos and supporting our teachers and our parents, and we work well together in that regard.
Okay, Melanie, how do you define the role of a trustee?
Oh, I love this one. Like I said, the role of a trustee is governance and guidance. It is our job to provide direction and goals. So, you know, we set goals for the district and task our superintendent and our staff to accomplish those. We don't tell them how to do it. They're the experts. We hire them to do this job. So what we do is tell them as parents and community members and as their board, here's where we want to go. Here are the ways that we see our district going, and here's how we want our kiddos to move through our system. How would you do that, experts? And then we talk about it. We work on it together. But if we don't manage them day-to-day, we, you know, we champion them. We support them, and, you know, we help them along in this journey together.
Eric, same question for you. How do you find the role, define the role of a trustee?
Sure. I agree with Ms. Dunham. It's a governance position. It's a position where we don't blindly manage. We really work directly with the superintendent, and the superintendent turns and works with his or her staff. I think we set the vision, and we set the mission for the district, and we set benchmarks and metrics and work with the superintendent to see if those are accomplished, and we hold the superintendent accountable for that. And that person turns and holds the rest of the community accountable for that. I think we're also in the essence of the community. It's one of our main roles, and a key to know kind of how we're doing as a district. We're transparent with information. If we have good information, we share it. If we have information that's not effective, we share that and tell the community what we're going to do differently to make things better. But I think ultimately, it's about transparency and accountability.
Same, best question for last, I think. What makes you passionate about education, Eric?
Correct. What makes me passionate is I've spent my career in education. I've worked with parents. I've sat down with parents, watched them cry when we've told them their kid has a disability. I've worked with kids that are homeless. I've worked with a kid in Pika, Kansas, who was living in his car. His mother got him into school, and the moment the school opened in the morning, and we stopped what we were doing and grabbed the resources, which were the school psychologist, school counselor, school social worker, and found a home for this family. So that's what drives my interest in doing this. I've been working for 35 years in public education, and I'm passionate about every kind of kid, from the kind of most attractive, gifted, talented kid, to the kid who struggles. The kid who struggles with health, they don't have food. The kid who struggles with health, they don't learn well. The kid who struggles with health, has behavior issues. And I show a lot of sympathy for all types of kids that have worked with, run the gamut of that. So my passion is to continue to do that as a board member.
Melanie, same question. What makes you passionate about education?
So I grew up in a single-parent household. I was the first in my family to graduate from college. I was the free-reduced lunch kid. It was teachers who showed me that there was a better way. I had teachers at my wedding, and I still talk to several of them today. Teachers made a really big difference in my life, and they showed me, you know, what I could really accomplish. So my passion is to show every kiddo that they can achieve the things that they want to achieve, whatever that means for them. You know, raising my kids in Old Town, working with low socio-eco kids, special needs kids, medically fragile kids. It's my, it is my passion to make sure that kids at every single level have the opportunities that they need to reach their full potential. No matter what that is, every kiddo has that potential and that right. And I believe so passionately that we can do that in GIST.
All right. Now we'll have one minute for closing remarks.
Okay. So I'm Melanie again. 2014 was when I was elected. It came to be that I ran for school board after serving on the 2013-2014 Strategic Plan Committee. I didn't really realize that public education could be as amazing as we set out to be. We set really big goals. We worked together as a community. I think we had 260-some-odd members of the community set those goals. And we were told it was going to be a process. We set three, five, 10-year goals, and we're seeing those goals come to fruition now. We're seeing the hard work of our teachers and our staff and our administrators come to fruition. That job is not done. And so I humbly ask for your vote to continue this work. It's important for every kiddo in our district, and I'm looking forward to continuing this job. Thank you.
All right, Eric. One minute for closing remarks.
Sure. And thanks so much to the chamber for hosting this event. It's been wonderful to listen to different candidates. Again, I'm Eric Robinson, and I hope you will vote for me. I'm a person who comes with a lot of experience in the public schools. I've worked with multiple superintendents. I've created district-wide plans, school-level plans, behaviorally, academically. I'm a data-driven person, so I'm always looking for the best evidence. I'm going to be real transparent on the board to let you know kind of where we're at, what we're doing. And I think we're at a crossroads. I think we need a fresh look and a different direction to go with the district. I think in the last five years, the data that we've seen have shown the district's struggling. And it's a critical time for us to turn things around, and I have the experience to do that. So that's why I'm running. And for more information on me, at ericrobinsonforjist.com. That's Eric Robinson for F O R J I S D dot com. And if you vote for me, thank you.
I just want to thank you both very much for joining us tonight and your participation. And for a group. As a reminder, the written responses to the questions that we have as the Government of the Committee on the Chamber website, as well as a replay of this, the entire forum. And Francis Jackson, who was not able to be with us, will also have the answers to the questions from the forum here on the website. So thank you all for coming, and thank you all online.
Yes, again, thank you for joining us. Remember to vote. The chamber has identified October 18th as Get Out the Vote Day. It's the lowest turnout for early voting, Sunday, October 18th. Heard your friends and family and the business people vote. Thank you for joining us today.